Welcome everyone to this afternoon session focusing on the issue of regulating small arms. The issue of improving the regulation of small arms really kind of emerged in the nineteen nineties as a key area of focus for NGOs, but for governments, for regional organizations, and also particularly the UN. At the time, there was a great deal of research by Small Arms Survey and other organizations that really raised the awareness of the crucial role that small arms had played and were playing in facilitating small arms, armed insurgencies, and transnational organized crime, but also their role in domestic crime situations as well. Since then, we've had a huge amount of action. We have a wide range of efforts at the national, regional, and international level. They've been aimed at improving small arms regulation in relation to particularly the production, trade, storage, use, and disposal of small arms. These efforts have been aimed at setting agreed standards for governments to implement, improving national capacities, so improving the capacity of national authorities to implement those standards, and also sensitizing relevant sections of the private sector as well on the role that they can play. And also, the most central and overarching instrument we have in this field is obviously the UN Programme of Action on Small Arms and Light Weapons, but also the UN Firearms Protocol, both of two thousand and one. I think on the POA, I think it's fair to say there's some difficulties were encountered in the mid-two thousands, but I think more recently, there's been some signs of optimism with regards to the health of the POA. It was a fairly successful twenty-twelve review conference, and more recently, there's been the initiation of a series of more focused intercessional meetings of government experts on specific issues where there's scope for developing and sharing best practices. But I think this first issue of how the different UN frameworks, particularly the POA and the Firearms Protocol, fit together and where they're going will be the focus of our first presentation today, which is by Roberto Dondisch of the Mexican Ministry of Foreign Affairs. Mexican MFA and particularly Roberto Dondisch have been very, very involved in many of these UN processes and driving them forward, so I think we'll have a very useful and interesting intervention from him. Obviously, this event is obviously focused on the EU, and the EU has obviously been an enthusiastic supporter and implementer of the small arms agenda. Particularly, it's obviously supported these different UN processes through financial commitments and by the direct engagement of EU member states and EU institutions, but also as an implementer by taking these standards that have been agreed at the international level, developing them, and then applying them through the different legal instruments that the EU has at its disposal. And this issue, the EU's engagement with issues relating to small arms regulation, will be the focus of our second presentation by Sarah DePaul of the Flemish Peace Institute. Flemish Peace Institute has a wealth of publications on many issues relating to how the EU interacts with conventional arms regulation, both small arms and conventional arms more broadly, so I think we'll again have a very useful intervention from Sarah. And then lastly, of course, the EU has, of course, has been a very important funder of the various regional organizations that are working on issues relating to small arms regulation. So Instrument for Stability, CFSP funds, but also national budgetary tools have in recent years been used to support projects in Asia, Africa, and Latin America, but also particularly in the immediate EU neighborhood and particularly in southeastern and eastern Europe, where you have a large number of states with significant stockpiles of small arms that have suffered a range of associated problems. And this last issue, efforts, particularly efforts to improve small arms regulation in southeastern and eastern Europe, will be the focus of our third presentation by Slav Anamboskovich of the Southeastern and Eastern Europe Clearinghouse for the Control of Small Arms and Light Weapons, or CSAC. And this is an area where CSAC has been hugely active in the ten years of its existence, more than ten years of its existence. So I'm going to ask each speaker to speak for ten minutes. I think we'll take all three presentations together and then have questions and interventions from the floor, which I think we're all looking forward to greatly. And I should also add that fuller biographies of all three speakers are available in your speaker's packs. So with that, I'll hand over to Roberto Dondisch. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mark. Thank you for the consortium for inviting me. It's a pleasure being here. If I say anything that is incoherent, it's a jet lag. I always like to have that to make sure that I cover myself. But it's great to be here and to talk about regulation, small arms in general, because sometimes we have to, you know, we've been involved for many years in the Armed Trade Treaty negotiations, at least I was involved in it, at least formally seven years, really ten years since the beginning of it. But it's important to understand that as we get forward to the entry into force of the treaty, we are still waiting for four more ratifications. I'm sure they're going to be coming about in the next weeks. There's going to be a special event during the high-level segment of the G A, China Assembly, so I'm sure we're going to have at least four more. And the treaty will be entering into force by the end of the year. And when we were in the middle of negotiations and we said that we want a treaty that entered into force in two thousand and fourteen, many people thought that was an aspirational goal. Well, it's not. It's going to happen. But it's not only that that we need. It's not only the Armed Trade Treaty and the full implementation, which, by the way, we still have to work out quite a few things. And we knew that in the negotiations. We knew we're leaving behind some issues, which at that point, we decided it was going to be better to negotiate among those countries who were going to be part of it and not necessarily with the whole membership of the UN, considering that some countries had been clear that they were not looking forward to joining the Armed Trade Treaty. So as we look into what we have, we have to understand the different parts. Mark already talked about the POA, for instance. The POA, which is a politically binding document, not a legally binding document, has a lot of things to take into plenary, into the action of the international community or into the view of the international community, some of the issues that we have to deal with. But the POA has not been very good at following up sometimes what the states have decided on doing. Even we have the case of the two thousand and ten BMS, in which a document was adopted by consensus in the meaning of state parties, and then some countries followed up by trying to make sure that we never refer to that document again, even though everybody agreed to it. And that's something that we're seeing more and more. So a closed negotiation doesn't mean it's closed. And why? Because the dynamics in the rooms have been changing, and this is something that is very important to understand. The divisions within the UN have been changing very fast and have been moving into a situation that I probably haven't seen since, I don't want to say the Cold War, because it's not the same division, but maybe the, but that division, even though it's not the same group of countries, it's actually was as strong as it is right now. And that's something we have to look into. So we have the Programme of Action, we have the ATT, but we also have the Firearms Protocol and the Palermo Convention, the protocol with the least amount of ratifications among all the protocols, and nevertheless, probably the best piece of international legal document that we have out there in order to prevent the illicit trafficking of firearms. The protocol is actually quite advanced, quite direct, and deals with many of the issues that we have been trying to deal with in other areas. But the nice thing also that I want to talk about is, you know, if you look at the ATT, especially the diversion section, which is the one I facilitated, but also the section on cooperation, international cooperation, and you put them together with the Firearms Protocol, we have a very decent framework set out there that should allow for true cooperation and excellent work in trying to prevent diversion of weapons. The problem is that we're not applying it as it should be, at least the protocol so far. So there has to be more work in applying the protocol, in making sure that those countries are going to be part of the Armed Trade Treaty, work the protocol within the same framework as they're working the Armed Trade Treaty. There are different weapons covered by each, we know that, but anyhow, there are, when it comes at least to small arms and light weapons. And this comes to mind because we are still discussing the idea of the review mechanism of the implementation of the Firearms Protocol. We haven't gotten there. Italy's presenting a new proposal. And I think in one way or another, we have to move forward in an implementation mechanism. Why? Because we're not implementing it the way it was written. There's still a lack of work, and we have to follow up, and that's very important. And then we have POA, ATT, Palermo, the ITI, of course, but we also have the export control mechanisms, especially VASINAR, which play their part, the EU Code of Conduct, of course. And then one of the issues that is more worrisome, at least in the case of Mexico, it's a lack of internal regulations in some countries, and in our case, it's clearly the United States. The vast majority of weapons which are illegally trafficked into Mexico, as you all know, they're sold legally in the United States, and they're trafficked to Mexico in what we call "ant-trafficking," you know, one or two guns at a time, sorry, but not only small arms, also light weapons. So even though we are working in making a stronger border, by the way, now where it's not only trafficking of, it used to be, you know, the idea, well, because drugs go to the US and then the arms come to Mexico, well, now we're getting marijuana from the US to Mexico. So it's a completely different situation that we're facing now with the legalization in Colorado and Washington State. But that's something that we have to still deal with. How do we deal with that? How do we make sure that international commitments are not broken by internal regulations? And how to make sure that we make sure that whatever our internal legislation establishes stays within our borders? That's a good question. So that's part of the challenge that we have. But at the same time, and I don't want to run too long, there's going to be ample time, I hope, for questions and answers, but just want to make two more points. One, we are looking at a situation right now in the world in which we hear more and more about the arming of sub-national groups. Let's just remember the experiences that we had in the past about what happens later with those weapons. And let's make sure that any actions that are taken actually take into account that situation. The Armed Trade Treaty is very clear about the need to mitigate the risk of the arms being diverted. That creates a joint responsibility from the exporting state as well as importing state or groups, but specifically from the exporting state, about what happens to those weapons. So that's something that we have to be very careful about, because otherwise instability is going to be permanent. And I just want to put that out. Finally, just to touch on a point which is, I think, very interesting. I think it's one of the major issues that we have to look at, and the most positive ones, I believe. The issue of regulating small arms and light weapons has been, for many years, one directly involved in the security and disarmament field. Bit by bit, actions taken by UN Security Council have introduced the logic of being able to stop the flow of weapons as a way of creating stability and allowing for development, which I think is pretty good. Now, we're in the next stage. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but in the UN, we're actually now negotiating the post-two thousand and fifteen development agenda, which will replace the Millennium Development Goals. And it's a very important negotiation, probably the most important in the last twenty years in the UN, because it's going to guide the actions of every state in terms of development and the logic of international cooperation for development. Well, the most interesting part of it, that we're still a year away from the post-two thousand and fifteen development agenda, but a month ago, we negotiated the Sustainable Development Goals, which come from the Rio Post-two thousand and fifteen decision, but it's actually going to be the base of the post-two thousand and fifteen development agenda. And Goal sixteen is one which is very important. It was very difficult to get there, but the strong backing of the European Union countries was key as well in getting this in. And Goal sixteen talks about promoting peaceful and inclusive societies for sustainable development, provide access to justice for all, and build effective, accountable, and inclusive institutions at all levels. And if I go down to the targets in the objective, target sixteen point four says, "By two thousand and thirty, significantly reduce illicit financial and armed flows, strengthen recovery and return of stolen assets, and combat all forms of organized crime." This is the first time, by the way, this was adopted by consensus as well. It is the first time that we actually see the clear link between reducing the illicit arms flows and the work that the international community is doing regarding development. And it's about time. It's about time because we have seen what the lack of, or we have seen what the violence that is strengthened by the use of these kinds of arms creates in terms of development, and we see the cycle that is created through it. So I think this moves us into a new direction that we should all be very much focused on to see how this can strengthen the development agenda, can strengthen the new paradigm that is being created, and there's still a lot of work to be done on this issue. Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you, Mark.
Brilliant. Thank you very much. Exactly twelve minutes. Perfect. A good model for my next two presenters, I think. So that was an excellent overview of the international structure, POA, Firearms Protocol, and really usefully at the end, though, in terms of what future developments will be in terms of mainlining this into the development agenda as well. And with that, I will hand over to Sarah to talk about the EU dimension.
Yes. Thank you, Mark. I prepared a concise PowerPoint presentation just to, it's a little bit easier to follow the structure of the presentation, I believe. What I will try to cover is to enlighten the EU distinct approach to small arms and light weapons, because it's true that the EU is very supportive to whatever the UN does in the field of small arms and light weapons. But at the same time, I think we can distinct three different approaches specific to the EU that bring specific dynamics with them and also have produced different documents and legislation with a specific purpose. So we'll go through that. I also will come to an overview of the most important legislation, EU legislation in place concerning small arms and light weapons and firearms, and then I will end the presentation with some concluding remarks. So the first approach that the EU has taken to small arms and light weapons comes from the logic of creating a common market. So at the end of nineteen eighty-five, beginning of the nineteen nineties, the EU created with the Schengen Agreement and the European Act, and one internal market. And by abolishing its internal trade barriers and abolishing its border controls, there was a need felt to create some security or safety measures common to all EU member states to compensate for this lack of internal control on trade within the EU. And it refers a little bit to the Mexican-US case, where there's a danger of people buying firearms in some member states and transferring them without any control to other member states if there's no common or minimal criteria, actually, safety guarantees to control some minimal safety measures. So that's what the EU tried to do in the Firearms Directive of ninety-one, setting these minimal safety guarantees focused specifically on civil arms, so on firearms for civil use. That is because firearms that are used for military use were excluded from the working of the internal market. So it's from the very beginning that the EU is dealing with small arms and light weapons that this distinction between firearms for civil and for military use is in place, and that's a difference from how the UN is approaching small arms and light weapons and the problems that come with it. This Firearms Directive of ninety-one was later accomplished by a regulation on also that governs the export of these civil firearms. I'll come back to that later. It's just to mention that these two aspects were both focused on firearms for civil use. And the logic here is the EU tried to enable free movement of goods and persons while guaranteeing some minimal safety measures. Secondly, at the beginning of the nineteen nineties, the EU became concerned about the external security threats that small arms and light weapons pose, and it developed this European Code of Conduct on the Common Arms Export, which targets really the military equipment and also military small arms and light weapons are included in this. It's an instrument to govern arms export control, so it's really how are we, as European member states, are dealing our export controls to countries outside the EU. This Code of Conduct, as many of you know, has been replaced now by Common Position in two thousand and eight, and it's not legally, it is legally binding, but it is an instrument under the European Common Foreign and Security Policy. Secondly, apart from what the EU created to govern its own conduct, it also supported many multilateral instruments, and the most important instrument the EU created is the EU strategy to combat illicit accumulation and trafficking of small arms and light weapons and their ammunition. In this document, the EU is really promoting multilateralism, which means that it supports UN initiatives, it organizes outreach seminars to strengthen the legislation in countries outside of the EU. It's not only focused on trade, it's also about stockpile management, prevention of theft and disarmament and other things. Really, this EU strategy, yeah, it's a combination of several different things, not only trade, and it also tries to mainstream the difficulties and the danger of small arms and light weapons in other instruments the EU has, such as peace and security initiatives or peacebuilding initiatives. So it also mainstreamed this problem, this problem see into other documents the EU has. The logic here is really to strengthen external security outside of the EU, both by its own export controls, strengthening them and harmonizing them, and by supporting outside programs, mainly from the UN, also OICE and others. A third approach towards small arms and light weapons, this one is the newest one, is a focus on internal security. As we said from the very beginning, the EU is aware that firearms and small arms pose security threats, and as we said before, it was first focused on external security, but then since the beginning of two thousand, really, the focus on its internal security threats grew. So there were some, it's a time of, you know, the terrorism attacks in, of course, in New York, but also in London and Madrid, and also there were some public shootings in the EU, and it became very clear that it also threatens firearms specifically, threaten the security within our own borders. There was an awareness that this distinction between external and internal security is really blurring, and why? One important element is that the EU enlarged in the course of the years two thousand substantially, two thousand and four, two thousand and seven, two thousand and thirteen, with lots of eastern European countries, and in some of them, there was a big problem with stockpile management of firearms. So while they were already aware that there were these flows of firearms from southern eastern Europe to African countries, also it became clear that these arms, these same arms, were now part of the EU because we integrated those countries and also because there were flows into the European Union as well. Secondly, it's not only about trafficking and trades, there are also other sources of illegal acquisition of firearms, like theft, like illegal diversion of firearms, or firearms that were acquired legally but were diverted into illegal circuits. So with this new focus on organized crime, basically, the EU developed some instruments, we'll come back to the instruments later, to tackle organized crime and illegal trafficking within the EU. There's also institutional stimulus to this, which is the Lisbon Treaty in two thousand and nine, which, yeah, after which the former Third Pillar on Justice and Home Affairs was transformed substantially, and the EU has now more competences in the area of justice and home affairs than it used to have. Lots of decision, like the decision-making is no longer made on a, no longer made by consensus, but by qualified majority. And also, there is, since two thousand and ten, the DG Home, which is specifically focused on organized crime, on terrorism, on these kind of aspects. We see that the Commission has took up a real role in stimulating new policy on this So these are some initiatives that we can link with this internal security aspect. We see that in the Stockholm Programme of two thousand and ten and the Internal Security Strategy, there is attention for illegal firearms that create a security problem to the EU. It should be mentioned that at the beginning, also in, from this approach of internal security, the EU approached at first firearms for civil use, but later on, the newer the initiative, the more it becomes clear that there's no real reason for distinguishing anymore between civil or military firearms if one is attacking illegal firearms and illegal trade and acquisition and use of these arms. So in two thousand and ten, there was also this action on heavy firearms used by criminal groups, and the newest communication of two thousand and thirteen is another policy document. It's no legislation yet as such, but it's, these are initiatives taken by the European Commission to steer this policy field. I think I emphasized enough what the focus is of this approach. So then I come to my kind of, yeah, it's, this slide tries to summarize the legal documents in force. in force that the EU has produced on small arms and light weapons. It's a simplification because there are other legal documents as well, for example, on brokering controls that also include small arms and light weapons. And there are many other policy documents that have not ended up in law yet that are also very important. But anyway, so to make things clear, we can distinct that the EU has made a directive specifically on civilian firearms and transfer of these arms within the EU, which is the Directive of ninety-one. What it does there is create safety measures. So there are requirements to mark and register the firearms that are being transferred within the EU, that are like obligations to possess firearms, minimal obligations. Member states can go further than that, but for example, there has to be a legal good cause to own again. There is a minimum age of eighteen years, and that counts for the whole of the EU. So this kind of aspect. At the same time, it tries to enable trade as well for hunting and sport shooters, for example. They can have like a more easy access to, or there are different systems to, so that they can bring their weapons to other EU member states in liberalized systems. So they don't need an individual license each and every time, but the EU tries to facilitate legal uses and trade in civil firearms. Then following the UN Firearms Protocol, we know that the EU has signed this protocol, which is quite an important thing for the EU and not self-evident. But by signing the EU Firearms Protocol, the EU also is obliged to cover the binding articles of this UN Protocol and implement them in EU law. So they did that by regulation. A regulation is a legal document that is directly applicable in all EU member states, while a directive is indirectly applicable. So this firearms protocol really resulted in EU law now. Be it that also here the EU made the distinction that the regulation is applicable to firearms for civil use and not for firearms that are designed for military use. Then on the military side, there has been, yeah, a big, yeah, by now it's not new anymore, but it's still being implemented and it's a slow process. But the EU has adopted a directive in two thousand nine on intra-EU trade in military items, which also, yeah, encompasses civil, sorry, military small arms and light weapons. The idea here is a little bit the same as with the Directive of ninety-one, like they want to create, or they want to integrate military equipment into the internal markets. They know that there are security issues, so there is no free trade for military items yet. Yeah, okay. But anyway, so it's both here also enabling trade by lowering trade barriers, by introducing general global licenses instead of individual licenses, so to stimulate trade within EU member states and strengthen the EU defence market, but at the same time guaranteeing some safety measures. At last, very quickly, and this is my, then there's only one slide left, there's a Common Position which is there to control arms exports from the EU to outside, to countries outside the EU. And the EU tries to harmonize EU policy on this, and we have common criteria, we have a common list of military items, et cetera, et cetera. So this is a broad overview of what we have in the EU. Then some concluding remarks. We should say, or we see that fragmentation is there because the EU is really splitting up in civil and military aspects, because different DGs within the European Commission are involved, both DG Enterprise is there, and then the common market aspects are covered, but also DG Home is involved to cover the internal security aspects. Then there is a council which governs export controls outside the EU. There's this whole fragmentation, which, yeah, one could say that, like, okay, we recognize that it's a comprehensive policy field, but there, sometimes there are too few links and there are studies ordered by one DG that are not known by another DG, stuff like that. The EU and its, yeah, it's common to arms export controls in general, not only to small arms and light weapons, but we always hold these two, yeah, main interests with our trade and security concerns. And in each and every document, you see those two. So a document that is focused on preventing illicit trafficking and organized crime is still enabling trade in a sense, and which means that sometimes you see that the EU can't choose between those two and has to compromise the whole time. We see an increased attention for internal security, lots of new initiatives taken in there. At the same time, it's still at a very infant stage. And we also see what the EU does there is really try to stimulate police cooperation, try to gather data on criminal activities and trying to strengthen its intelligence data. But it's really dependent on member states to be effective and to be able to implement it properly. So the EU is really trying, but we're not there yet. On the external security side, I think we can see more of a status quo there. It's not decreasing, it's not really increasing either, especially with view to the Common Position. There's this review of this Common Position that has been going on for a couple of years already, and although we tried to end by the end of this year, if I'm correct, there are no major steps forward foreseen. So there's a more, yeah, the dynamic is very different between the internal security and the external security side. And then last but not least, there's this challenge of implementation, like the implementation of this whole EU policy field takes place at the national level. And there we encounter, yeah, several difficulties. Maybe we can go much deeper into this in the discussion, but for example, this distinction between civil and military firearms is not always that clear for national authority, licensing authorities to really implement this. We can also see that in a sense, the EU system for military arms became, or can become less stringent than for civil firearms. So sometimes the logic is a bit unclear. And at last, we see that there are some difficulties in taking the issue of export controls to a higher level. Let's, let's keep it there.
Thank you, Sarah. You ran a little bit over time, but I think it's probably impossible to speak about any aspect of EU activity in less than ten minutes. But thank you for a really, really great overview of the EU's engagement on these very complex issues. And I will now hand over to Slovan for the final presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, since we are on record and I cannot, like Roberto, blame his jet lag for inconsistency, except for my big lunch, I'll try to stick to my speech and then try to keep you entertained with the stories from Southeast Europe as much as I can, because this is, this is actually where I'm coming from as representing a regional initiative coming from the Southeast Europe. We are the clearinghouse for Eastern Europe and Southeast Europe for small arms and light weapons. And as such a strange mixture of United Nations UNDP Programme and the Regional Cooperation Council, which is the successor of the Stability Pact, we operate within the Southeast European subregion, offering technical assistance to the local authorities, trying to regulate better small arms and light weapons. So my presentation has to be rooted in the experience of Southeast Europe. And as you all know, the experience of Southeast Europe is quite complex. It's a very micro region, but with a heavy legacy of unregulated small arms and light weapons, which are circulating even today and constitute a major concern for a number of international actors. An alleviating circumstance in that respect is the fact that we operate within Europe. So the European Union integration pool factor is still quite, quite powerful force that helps us in implementing our mandate and assisting the local authorities. Because as you all know, all of the countries of the Southeast European subregion are either members or aspiring members and candidates to the European Union. Therefore, it gives us a bit of carrot and a stick to use the EU as an enforcement mechanism to implement what's out there in terms of legislation and the need to demonstrate proper enforcement. In that respect, over the course of years and more than a decade of our work, we have developed a very good relationship with the European Union and I would dare even to say it somewhat of a partnership, because for a number of years, we have been implementing activities and actions which are politically and financially supported by the European Union. And even today, we are implementing one of the council decisions, which is actually complementary and assisting the implementation of the EU security, well, EU self-strategy, which is referring directly to the Southeast Europe, Southeast Europe as one of the roots of, the root cause and the transit area of self-proliferation. The principles of our work, actually, the philosophy of our work is basically to embed self-regulation within the broad security sector reform. This was the only way forward to deal with this complex issue. In that respect, we had to go about this, the problem of regulating salve and small arms in a very, let's say, multi-pronged approach, trying to deal with several problems and issues at the same time, and then hoping that in the long run, the results were going to follow. In that respect, our efforts have been devoted to six streams of action, which in our mind are most relevant for self-control and non-proliferation. The first one is the reduction of surplus weapons and ammunition without, within police services and armed forces through destruction. Second one is the reduction of number of weapons and ammunition accidents by constructing much-needed capacity for secure, safe, and responsible stockpile management. Third one is harmonizing national arms legislation frameworks with the main international legal instruments, including but not limited to the UN ATT, UN Firearms Protocol, UNPOA, ITI, the emerging ISACs, the EU Directive on Control of the Acquisition and Possession of Weapons, and the EU Code of Conduct on Arms Exports. These are the principal documents that all of the countries of the region are aspiring to abide by. The fourth stream of action is building and improving capacities for self-marking, tracing, and record-keeping. And this is one of the major issues which cuts across a number of issues, and hopefully we'll go through that in later on in the discussion. The fifth one is developing armed violence prevention strategies at the national levels through the creation of national self-commissions, which are the multi-sectoral bodies consisting of different ministries, which are all in charge of, in one way or another, self-regulation and dealing with the self-issues. And last but not least, it's the much-needed awareness raising about the issue of self and the subsequent risks they pose to the general public. Also, in our mind, the cornerstone for dealing with and regulating small arms and light weapons is the issue of accountability. And we're trying to impose the accountability through two very distinct but somehow correlated principles. The first one is the principle of oversight, where we are continuously working on enabling periodic data verifiable reporting on national authorities provided to the national and international control mechanisms about results achieved. And the second one is the principle of international cooperation, which is building functional cooperation mechanism as a precondition for dealing with the comprehensive and cross-sectoral issue of self-control. Now, as the Southeast Europe in general and the Western Balkans in particular are considered to be areas of origin and transit of firearms, against that background, we have all seen that bilateral and unilateral activities cannot actually portray the picture and the magnitude of the problem of the groups, very tightly knitted groups and very closely communicating groups, which cross over this entire region. And this was the main reason why we started pushing for the regional platforms of self-practitioners, professionals who are dealing either with the legislation or the enforcement, to try to tackle the issue in a joint way, so to say. Accordingly, in close cooperation with the European Union, but also with other international organizations and partners, we are investing significant efforts in creating regional platforms. Now, these are the platforms of peer-to-peer professionals which need to basically develop common ground on the problem at hand, be that the problem of licensing of arms exports or the non-proliferation, or just the latest emerging issue also for the EU, the will to follow closely with more intelligence and more data, the problem of trafficking. So in order to construct these sort of mechanisms, we've created several groups which operate at the regional level. So just to illustrate to you with a couple of examples, one of them is the Regional Information Exchange Process, which is a group of regional licensing offices in charge of arms exports control, covering, convening twice per year to discuss legislative harmonization and implementation, arms embargo destinations, national reports, policies for specific destinations, and denial of licenses. The other group is the Regional Meeting of Self-Commissions of Southeast Europe, which is a forum of national self-commissions, meeting twice per year to exchange ideas, practices, and views about self-control policies. And last but not least is the regional platform we are launching this month. It's the Southeast Europe Firearms Expert Network, a forum of regional law enforcement and judiciary representatives, convening once per year, promoting cooperation in the fight against the trafficking and illegal possession of firearms. Now, relationships forged through these platforms are actually critical because they create personal and professional trust in the sincerity and the professionalism of what these committed and devoted... of what these committed and devoted individuals are doing. But also, they're promoting transformation, reform, and cooperation. And mind you, that some of the countries of this area of Europe have been isolated for quite a long time. So this is a unique mechanism for all of them, at the very professional, not only at the political level, to establish some sort of direct communication with their peers, not only within the region, but also at some of the meetings in a broader international forum. We believe that these cooperation processes make for the only sustainable mechanism serving as capacity-building tool, enabling full ownership and due implementation of self-legislation. However, in order for the authorities of the region to meet the current and future requirements, it is essential that they continue receiving structured international technical assistance, primarily in terms of information sharing, obtaining new skills, know-how, and necessary equipment. Based on such assistance, the authorities will more efficiently demonstrate their performance, track record, and do enforcement of new policies. I would stop here, and then hopefully, if there's any questions, I would elaborate in detail a bit more, and then even cover other aspects if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Slavodan. Well, that's great. We've had, going from the kind of global level, in terms of the different UN instruments, and where they've been and where they're going, to looking at the regional, in terms of what's been happening in the EU and its complexities as it tries to tackle these issues, and then also then the specific issues in the subregional level in Southeastern and Eastern Europe. That opened the floor up to questions, comments, interventions from the floor? Anyone like to jump in? Patrick, please. Oh, and could you all, before making your interventions, please introduce yourselves? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much indeed, Mark. My name is Patrick McCarthy. I coordinate the International Small Arms Control Standards Support Unit in the United Nations in New York. Thanks to you to all the panelists for your very enlightening presentations. And I have a question for Mr. Pao, and then just a comment that I'd like to follow up on something that Roberto mentioned in his presentation. The presentation on the EU, extremely enlightening. I learned a lot. One thing I would like to know about, you mentioned also in your closing remarks that this is one, a challenge faced by the EU, or at least interpreting the regulations and other law, is the distinction between military and civilian firearms. I wasn't aware, for example, that the internal trade in military firearms, you said, falls outside of the common market. Is that correct? So that was very interesting. I'd just be interested to know how that distinction is made. Obviously, when you talk about things like automatic rifles or pistols, then that may be fairly clear-cut. But other weapons can fall in between. Handguns are the obvious big category that can be used either for military or in some countries are allowed to be used for civilian purposes. Does the EU look at the end-user when deciding whether this is military or civilian trade? Or does it look at the type of weapon? That's my first question. And the second one, also to Mr. Pao, is concerning the 2013 Communication on Firearms and Internal Security that you mentioned. This is a communication from the Commission. That document actually mentions or proposes developing binding rules in the EU on tracing small arms and light weapons, which would be based, or could be based, on ISACs, the International Small Arms Control Standards. So I was just wondering, do you know where that process is? This was a 2013 document, so quite recent. But have there been any developments there? What are the next steps in this process? Where does it go from here? And finally, just a comment and to follow up on something that, well, a couple of things that Roberto said, which I found resonated quite a lot with me. You mentioned that, you know, the UN Programme of Action has not been very good really at following up on the commitments that states have made in that document. I think the same can be said too of the tracing instrument. It's absolutely true. I mean, if you look at the documents, the commitments made there are so comprehensive and so important that, you know, we really have to keep pushing that states actually go ahead and implement what they said they would. And the other thing you said was that if you look at all the global agreements that we have related to small arms control, so the Programme of Action, the ATT, the Firearms Protocol, the ITI, you called it, you said, "That creates a very decent framework", you said, and it's absolutely correct. If you look at all those documents together, it really presents a very comprehensive framework of regulation. And just, you know, some shameless self-promotion here, what we've tried to do in developing the International Small Arms Control Standards is really, first of all, take seriously all of those commitments that states have made in those documents. And second of all, use that framework, that very decent framework that you called, to really provide practical guidance about how you would go about implementing every single one of those commitments in the documents. And I think that's the value of the ISACs as we have them now. And given the conference that we're in, I'd also like to acknowledge the strong support that we as a project have received from the European Union in terms of, you know, in review conferences or biennial meetings, we've always heard strong statements coming from the EU as an institution, as also from EU member states, promoting and advocating for the wider application and use of these standards. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick, for your interesting questions, which make me at first nuance something a little bit. Because it's true that military equipment was excluded from the common market completely up until 2009. But then with this directive in 2009, they kind of integrated it into common market policies. So what happened was that member states used to exclude military items on the basis of Article 346, from whatever, an article that they used to exclude military items systematically. And then the European Commission challenged this approach of the member states, and they kind of won. So now, they integrated military items, and they said like, okay, we know these items pose a security risk, so we're not demanding that they completely form part of the internal market, so free movement is not installed. There's a common licensing system now for the military part. So that's one. Then secondly, the distinction between civil and military firearms is made on a combination of two things. Like both the Directive of 91 on firearms, as the regulation of 2012, have lists in their annexes to types of weapons that the legal instrument covers, so the field of application of the document. And, but it's not so much on specifics of the arm as much as the use of the arm. So what they do is like, let's say, the Directive of 91, they adopted four categories of arms, firearms. And then according to the threats that they pose, there are more strict and less strict obligations to obtain or to follow. But what they do then is exclude military use of these arms. So if these arms are destined to armed forces, to police forces, to any enforcement agencies, both directive and the regulation are not applicable. So they do have lists of weapons to which the directive and the regulation apply. And secondly, in the text of the document, anything with any military use is excluded. And there's also this exclusion of automatic firearms or automatically military. But it's a combination of these both things. We have the lists, and then the text excludes on the base of the end-use of the weapon. And then there are specific provisions for hunters and sport shooters, for example. Also for traders in civil, like arms dealers as well. And then sometimes there's this gray area, like what if an arms dealer is exporting to, like the police or the military in another EU member state? From then on, it's supposed to be a military firearm because it has military end-use. That's how they distinct. But it's true that it's not always very clear-cut. It is like debated in specific issues. Honestly, on your third question, like how is the communication, what's the latest news there? I have to say, I have to, I don't know, like later than 2013 currently, like where is it now? Maybe someone else in the room, but that's one I have to pass on.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. And also, congratulations for the work that you guys have been doing, because I know it hasn't been easy, getting experts to agree on the best ways to establish regulation. And I think it's one of those things that helps us put the big ideas down to what we actually have to do internally. So I think that's the kind of thing we need to do right now. It's not about creating anything new. It's about implementing what we have there. And not only in the global base, it's also in the regional one. Because I can tell you, in Latin America, well, in the Americas, because it's an OAS document, we have also SIFTA, which is a great document, but it's not being implemented well. ECOAS has a great document out there. Implementation could be better. So I think we have to move forward in that logic and work there. And if I may jump also on this, it's very good to hear also, and I think probably the ATT, hopefully, settled that division, because it was a long discussion that we had on the logic on military and civilian weapons. At the end of the day, we were talking about its end-use, end-user, where you focus on. The reality is that the intention when you manufacture a weapon doesn't hold reality in terms of what it is used for. And I don't know if anybody here from Finland, because maybe you can help me, but there's a Finnish-made weapon, a rifle, that is used for biathlon, which is really good, and I forgot the name of it. Well, it turns out it became the favorite rifle to be used by sharpshooters in organized crime in Latin America. Why? Because it's sold as a sport weapon, it's easily accessible, and it's much better than many military sharpshooting weapons. So those are the kind of things that no distinction can be made. Because at the end of the day, they create, both of them create havoc. That doesn't mean that they cannot be sold, that they cannot be transferred, that they cannot be used. Nobody's saying that. But they have to be regulated, and we have to make sure they're not trafficked, trafficked, sorry. So that's a little bit of discussion. Now, the ATT is very clear on this, especially for the EU. Because when it says, of course, the ATT, all of you who know it, it's probably the only treaty that I know of that has no explanations of what it talks about, right? There's no, it talks about conventional weapons, but it doesn't say what a conventional weapon is. But because it says that when we talk about small arms and light weapons, it leads us to those UN documents which apply. And since the EU is part of the Protocol on Firearms, then it's clearly that parameter that has to take, and therefore, every single firearm has to be included. There are other reasons why the ATT clearly doesn't allow for any kind of weapon not to be there, but it is just one of them. So hopefully, we close that door, at least in the international area, not necessarily in the internal market, that's a different area. But I think it's a very good point that both of you are making because we have to stop talking about this division because it's not helping. And again, it's not about prohibiting anything, it's just regulating and putting it the way it should be. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Thank you. I'm Frank Meusen from the Belgian Ministry of Foreign Affairs, Arms Control Directorate. I have a question for Mr. Glowinski. You said that you were in the Mexican delegation to the ATT negotiations, so I guess we have to congratulate you with Article 11 on diversion in the ATT. Because the draft versions before that looked rather bleak on my version. It was only in the end that this article came out very well, this criterion. So the Article 11 invites states to assess the risk of diversion before granting an export license. And in order to do that, states are encouraged to exchange information on identified diversion. And in our experience, there are some challenges and obstacles, like disinformation on diversion is mostly present within law enforcement and not readily accessible for arms export controllers. Now, my question is, what are your ideas, or the ideas of Mexico, on the operationalization of this article? Because Sarah told you about the fact that we are in the EU also reviewing the common position, and we have a criterion seven on diversion, which is a bit comparable with the Article 11 in the ATT. And we're also looking at ways to increase the effectiveness of our counter-diversion criterion. So it would be interesting to learn from you, if you have ideas on that.
Thank you very much for the question. Good thing that you liked it, so I can say that, yes, I facilitated that one. But it was a great, you know, even though the ATT negotiations, for those of you who are there, you know this, were very tough, very divisive. And the diversion part was one that had many people worried. But I can tell you that at the end of the day, in the last two weeks of negotiation, the group that was dealing with this, which we met every day from 10:00 at night to 1:00 AM, that was our time of working on this section. And there was a very good work. Now, if you see Article 11, it's written in a different form than most of the treaty itself. Probably Article 6 has some of this as well, Article 7. But there is a different logic to this. Because it was impossible to agree on what actions we had to take. Just on the ideas of, we could agree on what was the end goal, which was to prevent diversion, but no state was willing to accept at that point specific actions. And the clear example were the states which have big ports, Singapore particularly vocal, but other countries as well, who had a problem in taking any specific role as a transit country because of technical issues. Because it was, as they explained, the amount of cargo that goes through their ports is so much that it would be impossible for them to actually verify that no weapons go through their ports, or they're actually being diverted. Even though the Firearms Protocol actually requires them to do some of those things. But anyhow. So as you see, the way the diversion is set, it establishes what we have to do, and then it gives examples in each case of the type of actions that we can do. So for instance, it talks about prevention measures may include, and I'm talking 11.2, where appropriate, examining parties involved in the export, requiring additional documentation, certificates, assurances, not authorizing the export, or all other appropriate measures. So in many cases, the examples of what we should be doing are already there. We couldn't say we are to do, we had to say we should do, or we encourage countries to do. Because at that point, and it was elevated because it was the end of negotiations, this actually required a technical expertise that not necessarily was there in the room. So, but if we take these examples and we start putting them there into action, and certificates is probably the certificates is probably the biggest one, if we can start getting end-use certificates, that's a huge step forward. Also, transit countries have to be aware that weapons are going to go through their territory. Otherwise, there's no way of transit countries being able to act and prevent in diversion. That's another big one. Let me tell you, one of the things that we have had to do in Mexico is not to allow boats which are carrying weapons that are not coming to Mexico, are just transiting through, we don't allow them to dock at Mexican ports. And probably that's not the best way of doing it. It would be better simply know that they have weapons on board, and to verify it and let them go. But it's very difficult, because ship manifestos get there a day before, there's no previous notice, you know, it's very complicated. So those are, I would say, certificates, and if we can actually create, and SIFTA might be the best example out there of a way to establish a programme for certificates. So if we got certificates and prior notice to transit countries, I think we're going to be in a much better position.
I just have a small comment on that. I am Suzanne Hager from the Danish Ministry of Foreign Affairs. And Denmark being a huge maritime operator, we're trying to produce a kind of code of conduct for the transport of weapons by maritime means, and this will also, of course, hopefully give more transparency to this, and we will come forward with a proposal this autumn. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would like to join my other colleagues to also congratulate the panelists for, you know, the excellent presentations. My questions are many, because I want actually for us to look at the bigger picture. The first presenter listed all the regulatory frameworks that we have, from the UNPOE to the ITI, and now the ATT. I would want to consider and see the possibility of, you know, having to examine the implementation of these instruments, particularly from the point of view of developing countries, for example. In West Africa, like you rightly know, we have quite a number of challenges, and with the multiplicity of these instruments, there's quite a number of obligations also that are all attached to these instruments, reporting obligations, the implementation of key provisions of all these instruments. And there is one particular element that is also within these instruments that has always consistently been likened, which is cooperation, international cooperation, international assistance. And if these instruments are not implemented from the bigger picture, globally, only one side there, for example, you see the implementation being effective, the other sides are not really meeting up, these challenges will continue to be with us. The ATT, for example, is at the threshold, is at the threshold of coming into force. And the next thing is for us to begin to encounter implementation challenges. You know, our brothers, our sisters up here, having all the wherewithal, they have all the capacities to effectively, you know, control, but is it equally the same down the line? So these are some of the things that I think we need to look into, so that effectively we'll be at equal level of implementation, and the world will be better for it. The EU is doing a great job around the world. I expected this presentation also to capture, for example, the specific key priority interventions that the EU is giving in West Africa. You know, there are lots and lots of small arms control activities, small arms control initiatives that the EU is supporting, particularly ECOWAS, the organization that I'm representing, and by extension, the member states, the 15 member states in West Africa. So this, I think, is a significant development that we need to bring into fore in this meeting. Then lastly, in West Africa, we have artisans, local artisans. While we are talking about cross-border trafficking, we should also begin to think of internally, you know, the substantial number of local artisans that are involved in the production of weapons. These are local weapons that are having, you know, the same lethal effect with the traffic weapons. So I'm wondering whether in the Eastern European countries also, we have these artisans, and what are the levels of challenges? In West Africa, much as we are worried about cross-border trafficking, we are also looking substantially, we are also being challenged with the local, you know, the substantial production capacities of these local artisans, you know, internally, which I think we are making efforts to confront the challenges. I thank you, my Minister Chair.
Just a little, if you wanted to come in on some of those points, particularly the issue of, I think you mentioned, a lot of points being raised there from the West African perspective, in terms of the multiplicity of instruments and the multiple reporting requirements that are attached to these, and the challenge that that compose for states. I wonder if you, the experience that you have from your region on that issue, and also more about the kind of, we've talked a lot about the trade issues, but more of the kind of the internal dynamics, both of artisanal production, but I guess also in the South East European context, leakage from stockpiles that poses not just an export, a threat in the sense of them being weapons that will be exported, but weapons that will be then used in the domestic context. Maybe those are also issues in Southeastern Europe as well. Yep.
Thank you. Well, thank you actually for raising this issue. I didn't cover it in my presentation, but this sort of reporting fatigue of the institutions which are actually receiving the assistance is quite common even in Eastern Europe and Southeast Europe. Situation is quite complicated, because, for example, in the Southeast Europe, the reporting institutions need to report to different international regimes according to their preferences. So it's the EU reporting regime, it's the OIC reporting regime, and it's the UN reporting regime. And all of them have their own definitions and their own requirements, how these reports should look like. So as we're trying to develop software tools or different sort of assistance, reporting tools, how to solve a decision in a model of one size fits all, it's always a problem. And it's time-consuming, the capacities are quite limited, and then there's always this sort of a delay in reporting, which wouldn't be a problem for Denmark or Germany, but when the Southeast European countries are late in their reporting, it raises some eyebrows, and then, you know, there's a bit of unease when it comes to their reporting. So it's quite true. It's quite a challenge, and we're facing that daily with, in our work. When it comes to the internal dynamics of production and trade and trafficking of small arms and light weapons, every year, we are noticing different trends and patterns, and it's quite remarkable. As soon as you shut one channel of communication and work between the illicit traffickers, another will show up. So for us, it was, it's always quite remarkable that in a subregion which has such an abundance of small arms and light weapons, easily available everywhere. For example, the latest trend is that signaling firearms are being trafficked throughout Southeast Europe, and then being refitted in order to fit proper ammunition being used in criminal settings. This is unheard of. This never happened before, and everyone is quite puzzled, because if a usual, I don't know, semi-automatic gun or handgun is easily available and quite cheap, why would anyone then have a need for even a cheaper production? So that gives, speaks volumes about the situation on the ground. And we're now also registering a bit of a increase of these artisan shops which are operating, you know, even offering guarantees for up to hundreds shots for each one of the barrels which they reinforce in the signaling guns. So you're right, this is not something that happens only in Africa and Western Africa in particular. Europe is now looking into this sort of a issue, not only within the European Union, but also around its borders. The problems of internal dynamics are quite challenging. The often happening diversions, which are, you know, uncovered quite late in the day, or even the leakages of some of the stockpiles in the general population, it's always a concern. Now, the situation in Southeast Europe in that respect has improved quite significantly since we have been working both with the defence industry and with the defence sector, as well as the interior sector, to introduce marking and tracing as a significant prerequisite for tackling this sort of an issue. The trafficking modalities within the region are quite remarkable. Once again, it's like in the case of the Latin Americas, it's the ant trade. It is really the ant trade, it's the few pieces here and there. But it's such a high-impact, low-volume but high-impact commodity, that if even two Kalashnikovs leave Southeast Europe and end up in Paris, it's news. It's not even news, it's a political crisis. So it's quite a challenge, and luckily now with the developments within the European Union, as the Commission is now trying to focus more on the security aspect, not only on regulating the trade and tariffs on small arms and light weapons, Europe is reaching out more towards Southeast Europe, but also towards other areas. I happen to know from the latest meetings with Europol, that, for example, Europol has formed a special branch dealing only with firearms. And this special branch is now trying to reach out towards all of the areas surrounding the European Union, trying to increase the flow of information, the quality of information and intelligence regarding the firearms, as we all see the conflicts on the brink of European Union are now dealing with the abundance of firearms, which are now easily but surely creeping in towards the European Union. Thank you.
Thank you. It's now, I think it is exactly 3:45. But to thank the three speakers and for the interventions from the floor, I think we've had a lot of, covered a lot of ground. I think if anything, obviously underlining the complexity of the small arms issue, in terms of the range of issues that it covers, and also the range of issues that it connects with as well, in terms of broader political issues, issues of crime, transnational organized crime, terrorism, conflict, et cetera. I think we've covered some issues which will maybe get picked up again in later panels, particularly on export controls, and there's another one on ATT. So some of the trade issues that we've talked, trade control issues that we've talked about today will presumably get picked up later. I think we've touched on some issues maybe slightly too lightly that maybe deserved a bit more attention, particularly issues like stockpile management, which are very central to the current small arms agenda. But I would like to obviously thank our three speakers for their excellent work, and have a good rest of the day. Thank you.